I have a question. In the definitions, they define family-related and family-unrelated. And under unrelated, it states that the children of a person who's living... Say, if you have three unrelated people, and the children are not counting. How do you define child? Is there a cutoff, or could they be 40 years old?
Yeah, of course, I think it was meant to say minor children. And I believe the intent of that definition was so it wouldn't screw up a non-traditional family. You know, so you could have a mother of four and boyfriend, and it wouldn't be occupancy triggered, you know? So there is a familial relationship. There was a...I was involved in a landlord-tenant dispute recently, where there were two women, each having two kids, plus a third roommate.
So the three adults.
And I said to him, to the owner, that...and he wasn't the one that was pushing this. They were kind of revolving through his house, you know? One would move out, or get thrown out, or arrested. And they've got a roommate in to pick up the slack. And I said, you know, granted, there's six, like, not wholly related people here. I said, you know, if it's just the moms and their kids, then there's some degree of control over the children. But any addition to that mix, the town would view it as an occupancy situation. Because, I mean, if you're going just by occupancy on the square foot level, two 10-year-olds equal a 20-year-old, just from body counts, right?
Right.
So, you know, if you factored it that way, that would put five people in that instead of...
So the boyfriend doesn't count?
Well, the boyfriend is urged to find other accommodations. And I told the ladies that, yes, you know, according to our all definitions that we have, this is okay. I said, this is about it when it comes to it. Because, you know, a situation like that, imagine they come with a plea to you, though can they do that as a tenant and not as a landowner? Because, I mean, everything comes through the landowner and goes to the ZBA.
Compliance.
I mean, they were good with that, you know, as far as, you know...
The owner was trying...
And the owner was happy because he was able to get rid of this troublesome fellow. But it also, he was trying to get on my good side, because what he had done in the interland was to facilitate independent dwelling in it within the confines of the building. And it didn't come to light until they came to me as the health officer, because of some violations and everything. So he was really trying to get back into compliance, and he would be more happy, rather face the fates, you know, for something like that. So he ended up going out, called the kitchen stuff, and just had his own room over garages of the master suite.
I'd suggest that maybe the planning board ought to examine this.
It all has to go through town meeting. But, I mean, you're right, they could certainly, yes.
And try to refine it, so that there might not be a litigation problem.
Right. You know, and, um...that's weird. And they don't mention them in the family-related thing. You know, so, I mean, if it was purely on numbers, they would say each one. But obviously, we don't have an occupancy limit for related family in the town. I don't think many people do, I mean, unless they go by, you know, occupancy of the building itself. But you can't tell people, you know, you can't have...
They could have three or four generations under one, huh?
Yeah. Consider...and that's what's happening with the Frey's. I mean, they have an in-law, you know, one of their mothers, plus the family, plus their kids, and, you know. But certainly, in this particular regard, there's a square footage.
All right. Why don't we get started? Call of June 2, 2009, meeting of the zoning board, adjustment to order. Freeman Plummer sitting over to my far left. Liam MacGyver, I'm Dick Lewis. Howard Burnham over here, and Brian Murphy, sitting in front of there, doing something fun with their families. First order of business, minutes of May 5. Any corrections, deletions, additions, changes?
None that I saw.
Howard, anything?
Yep.
Might entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of May 5.
So, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Who put that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Howard made the motion, and Neil seconded it. That's right, yeah. I guess the person that works off the tapes would like to...now try to remember.
That's right. I'll question you.
All right. Okay, new business. Special exception application from Jonathan Freeman to permit an accessory family dwelling at 19 Cross Country Lane. Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
You are here?
I am.
Okay. Would you like to make a presentation?
Well, sure, briefly anyway. Again, this is not a new dwelling. This was approved by you or the zoning board three years ago, and has been an occupancy since that time, two and a half years now. The only difference is that, at that time of our application, we were not allowed to apply to have a full kitchen in our addition. Since that time, it's come to our attention that there has been a new exception allowed by this town ordinance, that we would like to be granted that permission to complete our kitchen for our mother-in-law, who, my mother-in-law, who would like to have her own stove. She's a great addition to our family, but she lives on one side of the house, and a new addition, and we live on the other, and we're glad to have her there. But she feels that she would like to have her own independent cooking utensils, and we will complete that part of the package. I beg you, sue the town for adding that, because three years ago, we were asking and pleading and trying to get people to see that made sense. But at that time, we were not allowed to ask for that. So we're back, three years later.
Is she a good cook?
She is a very good cook, whether it's her stove or ours.
All right.
Very good. You hear that, Mom?
Yeah. Whole world be over Santa. I guess, we didn't have any pictures or floor plans, I don't think.
I have from the building permit.
It's kind of, what, it's sort of a common entrance way? And you sort of go one way to the main house, and one way to...
Well, it's a new addition, a new entrance to the addition where...
This is the addition here.
To go to the right to our house, and left to her dwelling.
This appears to be a mudroom entrance?
Yeah.
From the outside? And, I didn't realize, but you have a garage under, correct?
We do.
Okay. Great room. It's just, it's a wide-open room. And from the inside, there are no doors separate in the two, correct, your house?
Yeah, there is a door.
There is a door? Okay, we can see it, only right there.
Do you have two driveways?
We have two driveways. We have a lower driveway for our garages, and an upper driveway for the main entrance to all these. Can I?
Do you mind? It's always nice to have fun.
They only had three, so I thought, sure, the same problem. We must be coming in on a good... With most of our, we both use the same entrance.
Yeah.
Just, once we get inside, we go a different direction. But she's being seen a lot in my kitchen lately, so I...
I won't make any comment on that.
What do you use the second driveway for?
Just into the house. The first driveway, the original driveway's entrance is into the house. The second driveway is for the two-car garage that was approved last time we added it.
Oh, so the planning board approved both driveways?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is used, so basically, this is sort of an open-room concept above the garage area?
She has two separate bedrooms. I mean, there's a plan in there, at least it was in...
Yeah, I didn't look in all, I just looked at the one she...
There's the living room area, and then there's a, yeah, a food part of a kitchen, but without the stove, so... And, you know, there was the microwave approved, the sinks approved, but there was not a stove, so...
Joining us late is Mike Conklin, coming in off the bench in Bismarck. Questions from the board?
There were clarifications with MacGyver. The upper driveway allows entrance to the building in grade. And the others just drive under. So when you look at that front driveway, I mean, it's nice, you know, flat across, we're in a stop.
So the addition is...
I didn't...
It's low across. So the addition is low?
It is low.
Yeah, exactly.
So, okay. Anything on your end, Mike, or...
I'm not quite up to speed.
Okay. Take a minute or two.
Mr. Chairman, I see that under the ADU guidelines from the zoning ordinance, it did say that there shall be only one driveway serving this dwelling. There were two driv...or, the driveways were put in prior to it becoming an ADU. So they're taking advantage. I mean, it was a legal addition prior to that, and there was no privacy.
The change in use doesn't necessitate another driveway?
No, actually, the addition made them have the other driveway, just so they could get into the garage. Otherwise, it would have been a huge...to all appearances, the addition would have looked larger than the house, just because of height of the grade.
Yeah.
So it's, though it doesn't fit the letter of what they asked for here, because it's a retrofit, then I think that that can be, you know, looked at as what it was, just a driveway serving a garage that happens.
I mean, I guess I'd make the observation that absent the accessory dwelling unit, if you just added, you know, just it'd come to the, come to you, let's say, for a building permit, you know, to put out a great room above a garage under, it would have been approved, you know, without any question at all.
Absolutely. Probably someday will be reverted back to that.
Yeah.
Or you might be living there.
Well, I might be. There isn't that much of an age difference anymore. You're getting less and less of time goes by.
I've seen some huge mansions where the people lived in the kitchen.
Yeah, probably bigger than my house. But again, as a family person, I'd encourage anybody and everybody to consider that as a solution to the future, where possible, to help with multiple generations in one house. I know we were raised that way many years ago. In Franklin, we had a Victorian where our grandparents, my grandparents, my parents' parents lived downstairs, we lived upstairs. But something that has kind of gone by the wayside, and is coming back again, as the cost of taking care of our parents has increased, and it's a wonderful new addition to our family. She sees our great, her great-grandchildren every day, and when they come to visit us, and it's a great win-win situation, I think, so win-win for the community as well.
Where was your Victorian in Franklin?
Park Street.
Sitting up to the law school.
Nope. Okay. Well, I take that back. You were talking about the driveway. I see one of the conditions, it wants to be only one, it looks like there's already two, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, so I think, yeah, I think you were probably either just walking in the room, or getting up to speed, but it's sort of, basically, it's kind of a retrofit.
Yeah. So, I guess, if we were to approve, we wouldn't require that they remove the driveway?
No.
You certainly could, Mark.
We'd withdraw out.
And to be honest with you...
Which one should we take out?
When Miriam and I went up there, I didn't even notice the other driveway. I was shocked just to see that there was a garage in there.
Oh, I see.
So from the street side, the appearance is of a single family home.
All right. Comments from the audience?
Well, I stand in support of it, because it's still mother-in-law apartments, and the whole purpose was, it's still a single family, it's part of a single family versus a separate rental. And I think that's what the intent of passing our ordinance, allowing this, to have a mother-in-law apartment in a single-family residence, separate, but it's part of the family, so still fits the criteria and the intent of why we had this ordinance put forward.
One, I guess, one question. You on the septic or sewer?
We are on town sewer, and we're overwhelmed.
Can I just say, I have a question. Is there just one meter for the whole house?
Yes, there is one.
All right. With no other comments or questions, why don't we just review the special exception criteria that we talked about, the conditions, which Miriam has nicely laid out for us to a large degree. First, special exception criteria is the proposed use shall only be those allowed by ordinance, in this ordinance, by special exception. True or false?
True.
True.
All right, that's unanimous. The site-specific, the site, the specific site is an appropriate location and adequate size for the use, true or false?
True.
True. The use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located.
True.
Okay? There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, true or false?
True.
All right. Excuse me. The use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services or facilities?
True.
True. And six, there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True.
Also, true. So those, all found to be true. Conditions, both is spelled out in the memo from Miriam, and also spelled out in the standard guides for writing down special exceptions in section 2, 1204.4. Just looking at those, number one, accessory unit shall not be distinguishable from the outside, shall look like a single-family house, and not like two or more dwelling units. It sounds like that's pretty much the case. Is there a mailbox, is that correct? There shall be a few partners available to accommodate the residents. That wouldn't appear to be a problem.
If we're going to adopt these, can we put a period after three spaces, and delete the rest of it that says it lasts, the ZBA finds otherwise?
Yes, yes, yeah, that would be appropriate. Number four, obviously, we're not going to adopt that one, because there are two existing driveways for the property already. Number five would not be applicable, because it is on public sewer. Number six is sort of the key one for these types of uses, at least in my opinion. The unit shall not be converted for non-family rental, and occupancy shall cease whenever not needed for the related family members, the owner of the primary dwelling. And a condition that just specified the number of related family members permitted to occupy the accessory unit, and any increase in that would require further special exception. I mean, right now, you've just got one individual in that unit.
Right. But again, we originally, we're looking at two. My mother is of age, and maybe they might be living together someday, and I think we'd like them to be approved less than two.
Yeah, I mean, and it's indicated as a two-bedroom?
It is.
Can we modify that to say, that second sense would say the number of related family members permitted to occupy the accessory unit shall be two, and any increase...
That's verbatim from the CO, that's what I...
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right. But we have to put the two in there, so...
Yeah, I think we...
I think one of your board members mentioned it might even be someday, maybe I might be living there.
Right, right.
As time goes on.
Maybe Mike just adds, again, as Brian said, sort of repeat that verbatim, number, item number six, and then add a sentence that, you know, for this particular special exception, you know, the number of persons shall be two.
I think that makes sense, because if Mr. Freeman wants to sell the house and have any with a attached in-law apartment, you know, it stands to reason that there might be two people living in it.
But let me just ask one question. I was not at town meeting when this was discussed. Brian, for number six, if the Frey's put this house up for sale, the special exception...
Goes away.
Goes away.
If the related family members move out and off to Las Vegas, he's not allowed to rent an ally.
Right, right.
It has to be a familial relationship, and at that point, even if Uncle Joe was going to move in, he would have to reappear before the board in order to, even though it meets under the... I imagine that if they passed in the night, it would fit number six. If one moved out, they would have to reapply for this.
The way it's written.
Yeah. That was put in there in order to not become an enforcement right there, so we could track it, and, you know...
Well, if the mother-in-law moves out, and another in-law moved in, they would have to, you're saying they would have to reapply to this board?
Well, maybe not. It looks like it's tied to the number, and yet to the individual.
Yeah.
So, that two that the board has set tonight will go forward as long as Mr. Freeman continues to put up his family.
Right, right.
Or this. But at sale of the unit, it all evaporates. And at that point, the ADU would have to be put back to a, call it a master suite.
Right, right.
Or they could apply for a special exception.
I knew, I knew one would reapply.
The Neighborhood Association has made it clear that they would go on record against any other type of use, be it duplex or multifamily.
Right. All right. So finding that the six special exception criteria are all true, and finding that the conditions...
Two.
So one, one verbatim, two verbatim, and then...
Three verbatim. Four is a no.
Yeah, four is a no.
Five is a no.
Six, and then we added the...
The two.
The two limitation, that's number six. Mike, was it on number three that you said had the period in it? I just, I lost that.
Well, yeah, I was just going to say, which shall consist of at least three spaces, period.
Yeah. Because we, because we're not making an individual finding of, so we're modifying number three with period after spaces.
Unless you want this to say, to echo the ordinance language, and then add...
I think the only...
Unless you want this to say, to echo the ordinance language, and then add...
I think the only thing that, because of the nature of this particular piece, the only one that really entails is number six. Because, you know, if you find fewer or more, I mean, you face it, in the single-family zone, they can park three cars in the driveway.
Yeah.
Plus two in the garage. So they got more than...
More than adequate.
More than adequate. They give round to the neighbors. As long as their reparking, you know, the 15-foot setback.
Right.
So there's no restrictions on that in the SFP.
Plus, their current site design was approved by the planning board three years ago.
Did that go through planning board, or was it just through the...
2005, Bill Cool signed it.
It was submitted to the plan review committee.
Oh, okay. Maybe there's a planning board, wasn't there?
There's a letter here from Mr. Cool concerning the Plumbified Property Owners Association.
Oh, I guess that's...
That was June 28, 2005.
Yeah. April 28, 2005. Was the date that he applied.
Yeah, that was the application that was initially, or was originally, was withdrawn at that point, so... But, yeah, that bill, Bill there was representing the homeowners association out there. All right. Having discussed the criteria and the conditions, anyone want to make a motion to approve this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the record, what is the language for the number six?
Maybe just adding a sentence...
For this special exception, the occupancy of the ADU is set at two.
Shall be.
Two.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
I would make that motion. Second.
All right, so it was Mike making the motion, and Howard making the second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The young lady, very happy, so we'll move a silverback for her, so...
All right.
Thanks.
I'll be attending this in the next couple minutes.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business to come before the board? Anything you've got, Brian?
Nothing from us. As far as, there's been no, since you guys have started back to meet on regular schedule, you don't have a backlog of correspondence.
Yeah.
But I don't think there's any seminars or anything of that nature that are coming.
Yeah, getting to be summertime.
Right.
All right. Citizen communication?
There were none.
There was none?
Sorry.
Public comments?
Public comments, no comments.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Board has no comment.
All right. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So is everybody in agreement on that?